Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to our May 16th, 2019 school, uh, business meeting, voting session. And as we always do, would you please stand and say the, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's turn now to Board Recognitions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, if you will, join me in front. And Dr. Kevin Daniel will bring our recognitions for this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, we have some excellent recognitions tonight. Our first three recognitions tonight are for students who won the state championship titles in the Skills USA competition. Skills USA is a partnership of schools, students, teachers, and industry working together to ensure a skilled workforce for America. Skills USA mission is to empower its members to become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. Our first Skills USA champion tonight is Patrick Duckett from North Cobb High School. While they're lining up to take their picture, I'll tell you Patrick Duckett won the state competition for cabinet making. This is his third state championship in this event. He will represent Georgia at the National Skills USA Conference in June. Come forward for the picture. He is joined by, with Principal Matt Moody, Assistant Principal Mary Goodwin, CTA Department Leader Cheryl Cox, Teacher Mike Macarthy, and CTAE Supervisor Jackie Brown. Again, let's congratulate Patrick. Our next recognition is the Skills USA State Championship recipient is Fiora Sturdavant from Kennesaw Mountain High School Magnet and CTAE Career Pathway Student. She won the state championship competing in the construction math. We are proud of her achievements in this competition and cheer in the, in addition, she is also an academic leader at her school. So congratulations. Please come forward with Teacher Kristy Holbrook to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. Our final Skills USA State Champion to be recognized this evening is Rosie Nguyen from Walton High School. She placed first in Graphic Communications. As the state winner, she will be competing at the Skills USA National Graphic Communications Competition next month in Louisville, Kentucky. Congratulations, Rosie. Please come forward with Assistant Principal Stephanie Santoro. Next, we want to recognize the 2019 Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl State Champions from Walton High School. This team, well, the Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl is in its 33rd year and is a competition open to grades fourth through 12th across the state of Georgia. Participants are required to read a selected number of books to prepare. The Walton team mastered and read 20 Georgia Peachteen Book Award nominees. Walton won the county, the region, the division, and then brought home the state championship. Ladies, please come forward along with Coach Susan Buckert. Up next, we're going to recognize Walton High School's Robotics Team for winning the 2019 Georgia First Robotics State Championship. The acronym FIRST stands for, For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. The team won two district events qualifying them for the state championship where they earned the state championship. They now will move forward to the world championship in Houston. We invite the team to come forward along with Head Coach Brian Benton. Please come forward to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. We are pleased to announce that we have two Cobb County Schools that have received the Ramp designation. The Ramp designation recognizes schools that are committed to delivering an exemplary comprehensive school counseling program. Honorees are awarded for aligning their program with the criteria of the ASCA National Model, a framework for a comprehensive data-driven school counseling program. Since its inception, more than 820 schools have been designated as Ramp recipients. We have two schools, as I've stated before, two schools, Powder Springs Elementary School, if they'll please come forward. Beth Ruff, Counselors Beth Ruff, LaShawn Thomas, and we also want our Counseling Consultant Angelae Hoodle, Who, Hugelae, excuse me, sorry, and our School Counseling Supervisor, Missy Marsh. Please come forward. You bet. Our next Ramp recognition is McClure Middle School. As I call your name, please stand. Principal Dana Carlton, Counselors Wendy Shearer, Stacy Sledge, and Connie Plunkett Thompson. If you'll come forward to be congratulated and recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. I will acknowledge that both of these Cobb County Schools will be honored at a recognition ceremony at the ASCA's Annual Conference in Boston this summer. Next, we're excited to announce that Acworth Elementary School recently earned the county's STEM certification. The county STEM certification process is designed to recognize schools or programs within schools that support quality STEM-enriched learning opportunities, as well as provide schools with clear guidelines and criteria to support them along their STEM journey. Let's call your name, please stand. Principal Bertha Nelson, Assistant Principal Desharr Brooks, Teachers Melanie Miller, Crystal Smires, Erin Myers, Kathy Pang, Courtney Payne, Jeff Gaskin, Karen Webb, Amy Blakeney, and Becky Banks. Please come forward along with STEM and Innovation Supervisor Sally Creel, Science Supervisor Christian Calley, and Michelle Mikes, our Math Supervisor. If all of you will please come forward to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. Either way, I know you seats are there. Up next, we want to recognize Vaughn ALP Teacher Kristy Garvin for winning the Northrop Grumman Foundation Excellence in Engineering Award. Kristy, please stand. This award is given to recognize excellence in the field of engineering education. The award is a partnership between the National Science Teacher Association and the Northrop Grumman Foundation. It is designed to recognize the importance of integrating high-quality engineering instruction into the science classroom. The award is given annually to one educator across the nation. So congratulations, please come forward with Principal Shannon McGill. Please come forward. Principal Shannon McGill, please join her up at the front as she is congratulated by the Board and the Superintendent. Going to ask them to stay up here. Next, we want to recognize Vaughn Elementary School for earning the Advanced Ed STEM certification. And this provides schools with a research-based framework and criteria for the awareness, continuous improvement, and assessment of a quality and rigorous STEM program. The standards and indicators clearly define the qualities and components vital to creating and sustaining superior student-centered STEM programs. We're going to ask them to stay up here. We're going to ask them to join them. We want the STEM Coordinator Stacy Pitts, the STEM Committee Members Jennifer Deck, Kirk York, Karen Meyer, and the Math Supervisor Michelle Mikes. Thanks for still behind me. Please come forward to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. Next, we want to recognize that National School Nurse Day was May the 8th. This day was established to foster a better understanding of the role of school nurses in the educational setting. And you see our nurses coming in the door. National School Nurse Day is celebrated on the Wednesday within National School Nurse Week. School Nurse Day, May the 8th. This year, the theme was School Nurses Advocates for 21st Century Health, Student Health. Recently featured in the School Nurse Digest, which is a national publication, our nurses use critical thinking and, uh, excuse me, and provide highly skilled, evidence-based practices that meet the needs of the students, the families, and the school community. Cobb County School District celebrates, acknowledges, and recognizes the accomplishments of our nurses in the district every day. We very much appreciate you. Melanie Bales is the Nursing Supervisor, and we have many nurses who are going to come up to the front to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. We appreciate all of the work our nurses do. They do a great job for us every day. Thank you. Thank you. Our final two recognitions, we'll start that. Then we'll go to the Cobb County School District Financial Services Division Accounting Department. For the 38th consecutive year, yes, I said 38th consecutive year, this department has received both of these awards. The first one, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and the second one, the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. These awards represent a significant achievement in the field of professional accounting. It reflects the district's continued commitment to transparency and to high-quality financial reporting. So congratulations, and I want these people to stand when I announce them. Accounting Director Jan Hendricks, Manager Colette Turner, Accounting Staff Peggy McClure-Greenhour, Diane Cothran, Mandy Madison, Don Vestola, Shelley Polston-Hall, Beth Atkinson, Karen Meeks, Tricia Croupy, and Diane Cab. Please come forward to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. Mr. Chair, that concludes our recognitions this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have 14 speakers. How much time can we allot? Okay, our first speaker is Denise Raymond, who will discuss Campbell High School. She'll be followed by Brian McCarthy.
I'm here tonight as a longtime Smyrna resident, a parent who chose to put her two children through the Campbell Cluster since kindergarten, and I'm honored to be the founding president of the Campbell High School IB Booster Club. My oldest will graduate from Campbell next week and my youngest in 53 weeks. I could not be more proud of the education they have received at Campbell and in the International Baccalaureate Program. Cobb County's only IB program has been at Campbell since its inception in 1997. Since the first day of class over 20 years ago, the identities of Campbell High School and the IB program have been forever linked. The IB community was recently shocked to learn that Mr. Wheeler suggested moving the IB program to another school to solve our overcrowding problem. While we understand the Board's predicament to address our growing population while still needing to stay within a budget, moving the IB program is not the answer. IB is not just a magnet program in a school in the South Cobb area, the fastest-growing area of Cobb County. It is a community of students, parents, and teachers from all across the county that always have each other's backs. Just look at the blue shirts behind me. They are IB and Campbell. We are one. The Campbell Cluster will continue to grow. If the Board truly considers moving this program to another school in the county, it will only reinforce the notion that the Cobb County School District does not value the hard-working taxpayers of the South Cobb area. I respectfully ask that you consider updating and upgrading Campbell High School to the same standards as other high schools in the county, as it is the only acceptable answer to relieve our overcrowding problem. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Brian McCarthy, who'll discuss Campbell High School IB program, followed by Zachary Scanis.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for your time and your service. Uh, may it please the Board. My name is Brian, oh, God. It almost broke the podium. My name is Brian McCarthy. I'm a Smyrna resident, lived there for almost 14 years. I'm a father of four children. Next year, I'll have a sophomore and a freshman in the IB program, and my other two kids will go through the IB program as well. And my father would actually really hate the fact that I'm about, well, he'd laugh that I'm about to use one of his sayings that he always tried to teach me when I was a teenager. If you don't have the time or money to do it right the first time, you don't have the time or money to do it at all. And you guys, excuse me, this board has, um, come across with the idea to try and fix it with a Band-Aid, and it just won't happen, especially if you take the numbers that are in South Cobb as opposed to East and North Cobb. Um, as a citizen of Cobb, as a parent of this community, I only ask for fairness and equality. That's it. And if you list the schools on a piece of paper and list the amount of money that has been spent to refurbish them, to remodel them, to rebuild them, there is not a monochrome of fairness or equality in that list. And that's all I really ask for, is just fairness and equality across the board for all the schools. Thank you very much for your time and your service, and I appreciate it.
Zachary Scan, Zachary Scanis will discuss movement of magnet programs, followed by Kara Harris.
My name is Zach Seamus. I'm a senior at Campbell, a drum major in the marching band, a member of and leader in numerous extracurricular activities, a lifelong Smyrna resident and an IB student. I have spent my time at Campbell volunteering for various organizations in an attempt to leave my mark on Campbell as a whole, not just the IB program. The IB program at Campbell does something very similar. Through my experiences, I've seen IB help Campbell through academics, volunteer work, and building improvements. Without IB, Campbell would not be where it is today, and IB would not be as successful without Campbell. The IB program has spent the past 20 years maturing within Campbell and creating a symbiotic relationship, which is the primary reason for its success. Severing IB from Campbell would be detrimental to the success of a program which has been globally recognized for its success. I chose to attend Campbell over both Kennesaw Mountain and Wheeler, both of which I was accepted into because of Campbell's success and because of its proximity to my house. Campbell was the better choice even with its subpar facilities, which still need to be upgraded to be comparable to the county's northern schools. Removing magnet programs from Southern Cobb and moving them north will disenfranchise residents of the southern part of the county due to how many of those students attend their districted magnet school. Smyrna is the fastest-growing part of the county, and Campbell's district is the largest by area. It even includes Campbell Middle School and International Academy of Smyrna, both of which have their own IB middle years programs, which were designed to feed straight into Campbell High. Yes, we are overcrowded, but there are solutions to this problem that don't involve moving IB, which would only defer the problem given Smyrna's growth. Instead, Campbell could use
30 seconds.
...in comparison to the massive spending projects at other schools. I will be attending UGA next year to study economics and civil engineering to solve problems just like this. problems just like this, which are not unique to Cobb. Overcrowding can be addressed through means other than simply giving up on the existing community that's here. Moving IB is not a good option, and Campbell, the IB program, and Smyrna residents as a whole will not stand for it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kara Harris, who'll discuss safety at Pebblebrook High School, followed by Imani Sally.
Good evening. My name is Kara Harris, and I am a very proud teacher at Pebblebrook High School for 15 years. And I want to thank the Board and the Cobb County Schools for adjusting the design of our new academic building and this SPLUS project to accommodate our projected population. I would also like to say thank you to the Board members who personally visited Pebblebrook this week to see firsthand just how extremely open and easily accessible our campus is, and the safety concerns, and the sense of vulnerability these conditions create in our staff and our students today. I am sure we all agree on a common goal of ensuring the safety of our students. A step toward this goal in a desperate need at Pebblebrook is a wrought-iron fence with gates around the perimeter of our campus. We cannot afford to wait. I cannot emphasize this enough, anyone can and has walked onto the property unchecked and unbeknownst. Two weeks ago, several young men from another high school were seen on our campus, on two different days, before only some of them were caught by our administration and school resource officers. If these trespassers had had any violent intentions, our students would have been extremely defenseless and in danger. It is also my understanding that all high schools in the county should have received the Alert Point Security System this year. With this system, every teacher has an ID, they can initiate a code red. Pebblebrook is still waiting to get this system, and there are four days left in the school year. I do not understand why a school as open and unsafe as ours is not a priority to get this system.
30 seconds.
Please keep our students safe, fence our perimeter, and provide us with the Alert Point Security System. Thank you in advance for your attention and your action on these items.
Our next speaker is Imani Sally, who'll discuss overpopulation of Pebblebrook, followed by Cheryl Carson.
Good evening. My name is Imani Sally. I attend Pebblebrook High School, and I'm a sophomore. As you've heard, Pebblebrook has experienced major problems. An extreme concern is that our school is 700 students overpopulated. This puts students in great danger for multiple reasons. First of all, Pebblebrook is an open campus which is extremely unsafe. Anyone can easily walk into our school and cause harm to our students. The school being overpopulated makes matters worse. An easy solution would be surrounding our campus with gates. Another serious concern I have is Pebblebrook's lack of resources. Here's the facts. Pebblebrook does not receive the same resources as other high schools in the county. We don't have enough bathrooms to accommodate 2,500 people when we should be able to hold 1,800 people. We don't have enough janitors to properly maintain our five different buildings within our campus. Our school has five different lunches, and I have the last lunch of the day. Our cafeteria literally runs out of food for our students to eat. Walton High School, Lassiter High School, and other schools in the North Cobb and East Cobb area never have to experience these disparities. If all the schools in Cobb County should be receiving equal resources, why are we put on the back burner? Is it because our economic status and our community isn't the same as these other schools? The county's test scores are deemed as excellence, while Pebblebrook's test scores fluctuate. Is it because the minority rate is extremely high at our school compared to other schools in the county? Though our minority enrollment is 93% and 74% of students are economically disadvantaged, that is no excuse to neglect our school and just watch us crumble. Please make Pebblebrook a priority. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Carson, who'll discuss overcrowding at South Cobb Middle Schools, followed by Stacy Dax.
As of March 2019, Griffin Middle School was 253 students over capacity. Campbell Middle School was 223 students above capacity. According to the numbers you released today, next year, we should be at Campbell 336 students above capacity, and Griffin Middle School 334 students above capacity, for a total over-enrollment of almost 700 students. For reference, East Cobb's largest middle school holds only 1,362 students. As a substitute teacher today, I was in one of our elementary theater schools and teaching fifth graders, where I asked the 28 students, only two of whom were not going to Griffin next year. The numbers, these numbers, these projections, I believe to be low. We would like assurances that the county is approaching this overcrowding as the emergency that it is. We understand the difficulty in acquiring land in our portion of the county, and we, of course, do not wish to jeopardize any ongoing negotiations. With that said, 90% of South Cobb approved SPLUS with the assurances that these projects to address overcrowding would be shovel-ready on day one. I would like to know that the construction documents are ready. I would like to know that we have contractors who have experience in successful fast-track construction efforts. I want to know that you guys have a plan for next year and the year after, at least two years to build this school. Please tell me you're thinking about our future.
Our next speaker is Stacy Dax, who'll discuss the senior exemption, followed by Martin Reese.
Good evening. In reviewing the Board retreat minutes from May 6th, Ms. Davis made a motion to have the Board create a committee to study financial sustainability specifically relating to possible abuse of senior tax exemptions. Her motion failed 4-2. In this afternoon's working session, Mr. Wilson presented verifiable data that 23.2% of our population will be over the age of 60 in 2025, up from 18% now. That's a lot of senior exemptions. Like so many of our processes, it is time for the senior exemption to be reevaluated. I know this is a hot-button issue, and my intent is not to provoke discord. I simply would like to understand how someone could move to Cobb County from Forsyth County or from North Dakota when they turn 62 and not have to pay any school taxes. I would like to understand how a grandparent can take the senior exemption while they send their in-residence grandchildren to a Cobb County school. I don't believe anyone is in favor of denying the senior exemption to longtime Cobb County residents like Mr. Scamahorn, who this afternoon rightfully spoke with pride about raising his children in Cobb County schools, and is now happily watching his children raise his grandchildren in our schools. This is about businesses building retirement communities to help seniors new to Cobb capitalize on our way-too-genous senior exemption. I'd like to conclude with a question to Mr. Banks, Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Scamahorn, and Mr. Chastain.
30 seconds.
Will you reconsider your vote on Ms. Davis's motion to explore changes to the Cobb County senior exemption based on the shared and applauded report by Mr. Wilson this afternoon? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Martin Reese, who'll discuss the status of Osborne High School. He'll be followed by Don Whipple.
Good afternoon or good evening. I guess my main concerns is getting some clarity on the status of Osborne High School. Like some of others, I voted on the SPLUS every time it was on the ballot, and I'm not really seeing a good return on my investment, as I see it. We have a career academy built, and I guess some of my clarity, I'm trying to figure out, I'm hearing different things. Some say the academy will be a part of Osborne High School, some say it won't. Some say it's gonna have a different address from Osborne, from Favor Road to Wendy Hill. I don't know, I'm looking for clarity. And some of the safety issues we have there, as far as they didn't put enough money in, from what I understand, we need a new band room. Our band room is on the second level. There's a safety issue with kids holding these big, this big equipment down, we don't have a loading dock. There's some safety issues, because I'm on that committed to haul the equipment, and it is an issue. I'm not as young as I used to be. So, just looking for clarity, basically, on our school, the facility, what's coming up out of the ground now. It's finally coming up out of the ground. I understand it's supposed to have been shovel-ready about three years ago, but it is what it is. And again, I'd like to see, when I go to Lassiter, Harrison High School, like I'm walking on a college campus. When you come over to Osborne, look like we've been put back in a third-world situation that used to be. I'd like to see my tax dollars work for me the same way. When I buy a tag, their school taxes come out.
30 seconds. Excuse me.
I'm about to wrap it up. But I just need clarity. See where we at with this, and we can go forward, and we need to make some amendments and put some more money in that budget to our football stadium also. Our facilities there is pretty shabby, especially on the visitor's side. We run sinks of water, have to run out on the ground, no grease trap, anything, that's not sanitary. So, I would, one second. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Don Whipple, who'll discuss overcrowding at Pebblebrook, followed by Gregory George.
Right, good evening. My name is Dr. Don Whipple. I am a teacher at Pebblebrook High School, and I'm here on behalf of my students at Pebblebrook. And you know what? Let me correct that. I'm here on behalf of our students. I'm here on behalf of 2,391 scholars who make their academic home at Pebblebrook High School. I, like many others, have been extremely dismayed at the suggestion or mere conversation about moving magnet programs away from overcrowded high schools. Even this proposed idea doesn't provide a resolution to our school being overcapacity, and it certainly doesn't speak to the safety, maintenance, and custodial issues on our campus. Superintendent Ragsdale, I believed you when I joined this county three years ago, and you said that there are two types of employees here at Cobb. You told me that teachers, there's teachers and those who serve teachers. What we here at Pebblebrook High School need and deserve your service. Recently, we held a student-led town hall meeting between students and administration. Our students brought up extensive concerns about bathrooms, bus transportation, and general school safety. I beseech you to consider new and innovative solutions to overcrowding at Pebblebrook High School, solutions that do not tear and fray the very DNA of the Falcon family. If we are truly one team with one goal of student success, then all of our students deserve a well-maintained and safe environment which to learn and to grow. Thank you.
Next, Gregory George will discuss maintenance issues at Pebblebrook High School, followed by Marie Stockton.
Good evening. My name is Gregory George. I am a teacher, a parent, and a resident of Mableton, well, teacher and parent at Pebblebrook High School, and a resident of Mableton. I'm gonna start with a softer tone. I'm gonna issue some thank-yous. I'm gonna say thank you to John Adams and the SPLUS team for coming out to our school. I was blessed by our principal, Travis Joshua. He allowed me to sit in on that meeting and be updated on some of the things that are happening, and I just want to say that that was a positive meeting with the SPLUS department. Also, I want to say thank you to Mr. Wheeler and Ms. Davis, who came out to the campus and walked the campus with myself and some other concerned teachers, and had a chance to see some of our concerns. I think that was a very eye-opening experience for them. Mr. Morgan has seen it all the time, so it was good to have some other eyes to look at it. And I also want to thank Sherri Hill. I called her in the car with my principal on the way out, leaving the campus, and she was out there with her eyes on the prize doing the same thing. What I want to make sure is, is that we have a sense of urgency with Pebblebrook. As you can see here, the passion that we have from our students and our teachers about some of the things that concern us. We need things to happen this summer. We need that fencing to happen this summer. We need to have a transition plan. We need to have more trailers on campus so we can stop having teachers float from one class to another. And of course, we need to have serious discussion about the maintenance issues on campus. With that being said, I'm gonna take my last little bit of time to hold up this shirt and say that I will fight tooth and nail to make sure that this program does not go anywhere in the county. I have, I have a current student in the PA program, and I have a son who graduated from Pebblebrook, who went to UNCSA and now works in the industry. I'm proud of this program, and I want to see it stay at Pebblebrook. Thank you.
Next, Marie Stockton will discuss high school budgets and allocations, and she'll be followed by John Nuosu.
Good evening, again. I'm Marie Stockton. I'm a Campbell High School parent, a proud member of this county, and more importantly, this South Cobb community. At 1:30 today, I heard a lot of productive dialogue about enrollment and class sizes, including amazing actions like much-needed raises for our fantastic teaching staff that are planned for next year. But I have concerns about support staff and resources. Things like, number one, health and safety. Well-deserved recognition for the nurses who left earlier. How hard must it be to be one nurse for 1,400 students? Or one nurse for 1,700 students? Or one nurse for a school pushing 3,000 students? How is that speaking to the health and safety when we look at resourcing of our overhead by school instead of by students being served? Secondly, maintenance, as we've heard much of today. Today in the budget, you shared well-thought-out revisions to give $350,000 to Walton and Harrison based on an increase in square footage for custodial staff. We just heard from students today at 1:30 in the session that they don't have enough toilet paper, or that they don't have it replenished often enough, okay? How can resources be appropriately allocated for schools? Can a formula be used to better serve our students by looking not only at size, but also at full-time enrollment?
30 seconds.
Thank you. Lastly, basic resources that come with basic wear and tear that involve health, safety, and basic dignity. Squeaky door hinges while students are being tested. Toilet seats that have to be replaced by school budgets. And sadly, as I recognized earlier, toilet paper for students who don't have that supplied often enough based on our current formulas. I ask you to evaluate processes used across all Cobb schools and provide resources commensurate with the size of the largest schools in our county. Thank you for your time, and I'll see you next month.
Our next speaker is John Nuosu, who'll discuss school safety, overcrowding, and equity, and he'll be followed by Ann Parker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to create conditions for change to occur. I first want to thank Dr. Howard for the important conversations he organized this week on race in Cobb County schools. A lot of families felt heard, recognized, and affirmed. Appreciate you. There's a pattern of operation that I like to point out because admitting and naming a problem is often the first and most important step. Whether intentional or not, in our county, people with power make decisions that shift resources to areas with the most away from those that need it the most. That's the exact opposite of equity. The more, the mere suggestion that we move thriving educational programs from the south to wealthier parts of the county is in direct opposition of the things that Cobb claims to stand for. We don't talk enough about what everyone needs, so let's talk about it now. I work at Garrett Middle School. Our building is almost half a century old. Our halls are overcrowded. Our bathrooms and water fountains overflow regularly. The wet floors pair well with the occasional smell of sewage that comes through our halls when the weather is bad and sometimes when it isn't. In my role as an ethical school counselor, PBIS data analyst, and decent human being, I must work, push, and when necessary, fight for equity for all of my students and community. My responsibility is to tell stories with numbers and make data seem songs that lead to change. These are conservative estimates, but we have roughly 330 different class periods each day. Of those, 55 periods have more than 30 students. 31 have more than 35 students. Three have more than 40 students. It's often difficult to effectively reach 40 adults. Imagine trying to do that with 40 teenagers each day. This makes learning much more challenging. It also creates a safety issue because we have roughly 900 students, and with all these needs and pains cramped in small spaces, we only have two counselors when it's recommended that we should have four or more. With all these barriers, we find ways to creatively reach our students and make more With all these barriers, we find ways to creatively reach our students and make more with less. Our teachers and students are tired but resilient. We've experienced stress in various forms of primary and secondary trauma. Much of our community is burdened by various forms of racism, classism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, xenophobia, and all other forms of marginalization, both in and outside of our buildings. So I'm here to do the thing I do best, which is create opportunities to listen, take notes, and create conditions where change can occur. If we truly believe in one team, one goal, student success...
Time, Mr. Nuosu.
Join us as we work to make things better or move out of the way and allow someone to serve who will. Please provide a red flag.
Our next speaker is Ann Parker, who will discuss school safety, House Bill 30, signed by Governor Kemp, followed by Stacy Remaley.
Good evening. Wow. I'm a parent of a Pebblebrook student and also a magnet student, and I'm calling, I'm here this evening to ask whether the board has or intends to apply for the school safety grant recently added by Governor Kemp to the 2018-19 fiscal budget. House Bill 30, it was signed March 12th, and the fiscal year is ending June 30th of 2019. $69 million were allocated to school safety across the state of Georgia. However, it's up to local government to apply for those funds, to apply for those grants. So in talking with the governor's offers today, it's up to the Cobb County School Board to actually make application for those funds, or else they go unused and unallocated. If we have those funds available to us for school safety, it may free up funds already allocated in SPOLOX. There's a line item for every school to upgrade the safety system, so if that's not needed because of these new funds made available, then those original SPOLOX funds for school safety could be used toward other things that are necessary. Douglas County received 1.1 million. They're spending $30,000 per school on upgraded security from this fund. And of course, the deadline would be June 30th is the end of the school budget year. Of course, Pebblebrook was on high alert this last Monday, and the students were not allowed to have hall passes to go to the restrooms. However, they were forced to leave their buildings to change classes. So that's kind of ironic. And so the interconnectivity at Pebble is an issue, a safety concern, and that fence needs to happen this summer. If we're adding trailers in transition, we need a proper bathroom trailer like they have at sporting events. It's air conditioning with flushing toilets and things. We need to add facilities for these students, and the facilities need to be based on the student population, not how many bathrooms there are, how many stalls there are, how much toilet paper you order, how many custodians you have based on square footage. It's the population that needs to be taken into account. Thank you.
Next is Stacy Remaley, who will discuss CCCEPA.
Hi. I am a Cobb County parent, and I'm a resident of Mr. Banks's post, but my children attend Pebblebrook High School, the only high school that they will attend. So Pebblebrook is one of the high schools in the county, like many, who have children coming from all over the county. So it is always my hope that that brings attention from all of the board members back to the one team, everybody giving attention. Many of the parents behind me have children and are in your posts all over the county, from Mr. Morgan's to Mr. Chastain's and all over. So we appreciate your support and we appreciate your attention. We had, it's been mentioned, a couple of board members walked through campus this week, and that was wonderful to see them there. CCCEPA has been honored with attendance at our programs. Many board members have been to many performances recently. And the reason I bring that up is that showcases the talent we have as CCCEPA, but it also just provides an opportunity to show the level of dedication and hard work that comes from our students and our staff as well. I would like to ask, as a Pebblebrook parent also, that attention be given to the advisement that has come from the PHS School Council with regards to safety concerns. Many of those have been talked about tonight, and we're all in support of having all of our children safe and happy and healthy on campus. And in the end, I would just like to say thank you for your ongoing support and attention. We, as a program, CCCEPA, appreciate it, and we will appreciate it moving forward so that we can thrive and grow in the best way we can. And we will also appreciate it for PHS and the other schools in South Cobb so that they can grow and thrive as they can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Did you want to say something, Mr. Superintendent? Okay. All righty. Next, we have items requiring action following the executive session. Mr. Ragsdale.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams to require, to bring those items, and just a reminder that there'll be a total of three votes tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Chair, members of the board, it's my pleasure to bring you the Human Resources Personnel Report for today, May 16th, 2019. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the Personnel Action Report as discussed in executive session. We do have one principal-level or higher position recommendation. Dr. Alvin Thomas recommended for appointment to principal at Tapp Middle School effective June 1, 2019. And this concludes the Human Resources Personnel Report.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we approve as read.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Davis, seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? None. 7-0. Thank you. Next.
At this point, the board can entertain a motion to uphold the decision of the Student Tribunal in the first case the board considered tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Do we have a motion as stated? Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we uphold the decision earlier of the tribunal.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion. We have a second. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Seconds. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? None. 7-0. Next, please.
Next, the board can consider a motion to uphold the decision of the Student Tribunal in the second case the board considered this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Howard?
I move that we uphold the decision from the tribunal.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Do we have a second? Ms. Davis, seconds. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? None. 7-0. Next, please.
Next, the board can consider a motion to uphold the decision of the Student Tribunal in the second case the board considered this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Howard?
I move that we uphold the decision from the tribunal.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Do we have a second? Ms. Davis, seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Seeing none. 7-0. All right. Now we go to the consent agenda we agreed on earlier today for action agenda item number one, school properties disposal, and action item agenda number two, the approval of the Georgia Department of Education Capital Outlay Project closeouts. So that leads us to the discussion, well, without objection. Okay. There we go. Now we're going to discussion item number three.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask CFO Brad Johnson to come forward and bring the final budget presentation for this year. It's a very exciting time, as we've already talked about a couple of months. Appreciate all of the hard work by the Financial Services Division, the team. Most of them are here tonight, or a lot of them are here tonight, not most of them. That would be a miracle. It is a miracle anyway, but that would be a miraculous feat if that's all you had got had to do. Anyway, all of that being said, you know, this is a unique time that we're able to, as superintendent, bring in a balanced budget to the board that includes an 8% to 12.6% raise for every employee, every nontemporary employee. And so, again, we didn't set out to break a record, but once we got, somebody pinged us on, hey, is this the biggest raise that the district has ever done? As far back as 25 years ago, that's what we can find. We think it's ever. But we know that within the past 25 years. And it just speaks to, number one, our focus from my administration on our employees and bringing that to the board and your focus on our employees, because again, that one team starts with us, and it definitely flows out to all 18,000 employees that we have. So again, the raise is kind of the biggest focus. You can see there that there were other things that were included. We recognized our nurses this evening, being able to place them on steps. We talked about being able to spread more evenly the pay for bus drivers, as we heard from the bus drivers when they came to speak to us. And you know, something that kind of goes as a thankless job, it's fortunately getting a lot more thanks today, but our public safety, being able to put in competitive salary adjustments so that we're able to hire resource officers that are choosing to come to the school district as a career. That is tremendous because they serve a vital role on our team of providing that first line of defense in our schools. It's a different day today than it has been in the past, so I can't thank them enough for your professionalism and for your dedication to the organization. So with that being said, I think I've tried to take at least 98% of Brad's thunder. I'm looking at the list to see... I'll leave the allotment pool for you to say, but I just took that as well, so good luck. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. In all seriousness, I want to thank the board for your support in this process because, you know, it would be real easy for anybody on executive cabinet to the board as well to say, hey, we need ABC kind of thing. And the fact that we are focused on our team members, that speaks tremendously loud to our team members. So I speak for all 18,000 and say thank you for, again, the potential vote, you know, jumping out on a limb here. I don't hear any solves, but again, I appreciate the support of you guys. I really do. Brad?
Thanks, sir. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. Discussion item number one is a recommendation for adoption of the FY 2020 budget. Administration has conducted work sessions and meetings to review the budget with the public and the board. The board tentatively approved this budget on April 24th, 2019. Two public forums have been held, one on April 24th and another on May 16th this evening. Highlights of the budget include, and I'll just go ahead and repeat it if that's okay, general fund millage rate of 18.9 mils, no millage increase, and we've been long-term debt-free since 2007. We have a AAA long-term credit rating and a Mig 1 short-term credit rating, which is the highest Moody's investor service ratings possible. We have local revenue property value digest growth estimate at 5.5%. We'll get the actual later in June when we get the final digest. We have included in the budget a 90-position pool. We have included school nurse steps. We have included seven and a half custodian positions. We have included campus officer competitive salary adjustments. We have balanced the budget using fund balance to the tune of 18.3 million. We have adjusted the bus driver pay so that base pay is spread more equally throughout the year. We have a step increase for all eligible employees. We have a salary increase for all nontemporary employees. The salary increase is a range of 8% to 12.6% depending upon step eligibility, and we have added tonight additional elementary academic supplements. Mr. Chair, administration's recommendation to the board is to approve the 2020 budget tonight for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion, but first I'd like to get a clarification. Should the motion read as amended since we changed that earlier? You okay with that?
It can be done either way. If it was presented originally in the meeting, you would not be amending anything. It's not a motion from a previous meeting. But if you would like to do that, you could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Have at it, Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Paul Maitre. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation for the FY 2020 budget as amended in the work session.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Dr. Howard offers a second. All right. We have a motion, second. Any need for further discussion? Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things I want to, I want to communicate about this budget. First, again, I know was said earlier, but I think it was the ability for, I'll say this superintendent, actually, I'm just telling the truth, to be open and receptive enough to go back and look at the supplements. I think that's an additional $300,000?
$340,000.
$340,000 that was, that were added to the budget to do right by the 67 elementary schools that we have, and that's eight per elementary school. So I'm very grateful and thankful for that addition to the budget. In addition, the continued, I guess, bonus, I don't know if it's a bonus supplement, whatever, for our Teachers of the Year, Certified, Classified Employee of the Year, that continuing to happen. I mean, I think if you just couple those two things right there, over the last couple of years, we're talking over $500,000, maybe somewhere, right in that $400,000, $500,000. But those were things that were added to our budget in addition to the low-hanging fruit, the raise, and which said about public safety and nurses and things of that nature that might slip by people, but those are things that are very, very important as well, and I know our employees will be grateful for it. So I'm in full support of this, and I'm grateful for those additions, Mr. Superintendent and your staff.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anybody else? Dr. Howard?
I just wanted to say how thrilled I am just to be a part of making this decision, such a historic budget and increases for our educators and team members across the county. It brings me a lot of joy and honor to do that. I'm also excited that I can work with a group of people who can acknowledge the great things that are going on while always seeing how we can get better, you know? And it takes a different kind of mindset to be able to do two things at once, celebrate all the great things that we're doing, but always strive to get better. And I love that what we did in this budget, and I love that what will happen in budgets to come, we just want to get better each time, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no more discussion, it appears it's time for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And any opposed? None. That's 7-0. Approve the budget. Okay. So now we come to board member remarks. We'll start with Ms. Davis.
As always, I thank everyone that came to speak today. I said this at our board retreat, and so I will say it again, that in regards to moving the magnet programs, we'd be punishing the south part of the county because we didn't adequately prepare for the growth in enrollment. I spent five years teaching in an IB elementary school, and so what some people may not know is that there's a feeder IB pattern. So you have the high school that's IB, but then you also have a middle school, and then you have a primary years program. And so we do have Campbell High, we have Campbell Middle, which is also IB. And then right now, Teasley Elementary is doing the hard work of trying to be approved as an IB school for a primary years program so that we have that complete feeder pattern again in this Smyrna area in Cobb County, something that other counties have in different parts of the county. This is our one IB program. I feel like we have so many other things to discuss and to work on, and clearly, we heard about a lot of them today. I really would ask my colleagues respectfully to, who think this might be a good idea, to spend some time thinking about other sensible options. Lastly, I was not able to attend the retirement celebration for our teachers. I was at a school event, a couple of them, but I wanted to just say thank you. Thank you for making a difference, taking on one of the hardest professions that there is. And I would ask any of our retired teachers that if you can find the time to encourage and uplift current teachers, please do, because we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Howard?
I'd just like to share how impressed I am with the power of people. This is a public institution, and it just brings joy to my heart to be able to see people come together to advocate in a solution-oriented way. It really warms my heart, and I just really appreciate how much power we possess when we make sure that we're focusing on the main things, which is our children. Our children are what matters most. I'd also like to thank some of my board members who inadvertently woke up an entire area of the county. I am thankful, and I am really thankful, and I'm looking forward to the months to come.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next week, we begin our graduation ceremonies. Looking forward to that, Pope High School, Laster High School, in post five. It's always a great night, or morning, or afternoon, depending on what schedule it is. But it's always a great time to see these young people who have spent 12 to 13 years in the public school system finally get to the end of that process and get to shake their hand and congratulate them. Also, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. We do definitely appreciate all of our teachers and all of our support staff that make these teachers successful. We have, as I've said before, the best of the best, and I think it'll stay that way for a long time. I also want to congratulate the Pope High School baseball team. If we're lucky, they'll be the state champions again and succeed.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to congratulate all of this year's graduates. We're graduating, Mr. Superintendent, what, about 8,000?
923,826.
Okay, that's quite a few. Congratulations to all of them. You're supposed to have all the answers.
I got paper.
Well, congratulations to every one of them from all the high schools. The other thing is that I have is a sad note this evening is we lost one of our own officers here in the state of Georgia this week, Sergeant Kelvin Ansari, the Savannah Police Department. He was killed May the 11th, end of watch was May the 11th, 2019. Again, these men and women that put the uniform every day, put it on every day, they want to go home to their friends and family, they want to see the next day, and they are the ones with the courage to run to the danger while the rest of us are trying to find a way away from the danger. If you can, find it in your heart to say a prayer for his family and that they may find peace in the near future. And then another somber note along that line, we're only in May, mid-May, and nationwide we have already lost 43 officers, men and women. Just last month, I believe it was in California, a California state trooper, she lost her life to gunfire. So please pray for these folks and be thankful they have the courage to protect us. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, thank you. I want to piggyback off previous comments. Truth be told, there are sometimes people get up and make public comment in things I agree with, and sometimes they make public comment that I don't agree with. But to me, the overriding issue is public investment and participation. And when I first came on the board, especially in my part of the school district, there was a disenchantment and a frustration that didn't yield public participation. But I think it's been a combination of seeing some progress made with an appetite to see even more, that more people are involving themselves in the public arena, so to speak. And I'm very grateful for that, and you continue to do that, to help us in terms of the decisions that we make. One of the things that I did not say about the budget that I'm also grateful for is the summer lit camp that I think we are, that we will be doing for almost a month. And I think, again, that is another tangible investment that shows that we really care about literacy in our school district. And if you look at the schools that are being targeted, I think that's proof positive of more progress within our district. Also, the graduates, I want to already send kudos and congratulations to you. And finally, I said it earlier, but I want to say it tonight, Jennifer Lawson, Happy Earth Day. I love the work that you do for this school district, and I know that we are a better school district because of you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got quite a list today. Let me start with Milford Elementary School. Dr. Hermia Simmons DeVoe had me out and speak to the kids there. It was a real pleasure to visit another post seven school. It was shock, well, it was shocking, but it was impressive how immaculate that school was and the staff there, the custodial staff. And in the job, you went through the halls and saw the teachers with the kids, and the kids were just, they were wonderful. It was a good experience, and I thank them for having me out there to visit. Second was the Cobb County Retirement Luncheon. Want to thank all of our, as we did at that luncheon, for all their service. A lot of years we've lost, but hopefully we can replace them, and it's going to be a tough job because that's a lot of experience with quality people that we've lost. Third, had to go to the Pebblebrook Performing Arts Newsies. Once again, outstanding performance as usual. I think it's been one of the better ones that I've seen through the years, and hats off to the staff there and also the kids. They're perfect. It was a great show. Number four is the Pearl Foundation, the aka Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Luncheon. This group provides scholarships to our students, and I believe this year there were eight that received $30,000 of scholarship money. And this group does this year after year. They're kind of quiet and unsung, and Gloria Nichols is one of the leaders of that group, and my hats off to them. I've been to that the last two years, and we need more organizations like that to help our kids that are truly deserving. These kids have got scholarships where, when you hear their resumes, they're just not handing out stuff to somebody. These kids are some of our best students, and I want to thank them publicly. And number five is the Hillgrove baseball team and the Harrison girls soccer teams. Are both playing for state championships in the next two or three days, and our wishes are going out to them that they both come through and have some of their better games. They've proven themselves through the year, and these programs are outstanding year after year, and hopefully they could cap this with a state championship. And to conclude, I'd like to thank the public speakers that came and spoke for their community. Like I say, that is the same thing I'm talking about, is that we need people that are involved in their community and care, and that's the expectation, and that's what makes good things happen. And like I say, Ms. Davis and myself went down to Pebblebrook, and community members took their own time to show what they believe is important, and that speaks well. That speaks well.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. It seems like this is a monthly occurrence, but we've got several condolences that I want to talk about today. We had a first grade student at Bullard Elementary pass away earlier this month, and we also had a freshman at South Cobb High School that passed away on Saturday. And my, I learned this morning, one of my fifth grade teachers, Jerry Hollis, passed away today. He was one of those teachers that, you know, sometimes you remember specific events, but I just remember how fun it was in his class in fifth grade. And I know I learned a lot, but, you know, that was back in the day where the paddles hung on the side of the chalkboard, and it was a different day. But he was an awesome teacher and definitely will be missed. He was obviously retired, but sorry to see him pass away there. And then finally, as you've all seen on the news, Jocelyn Alsop was a student at Osborne High School and was the unfortunate victim of murder by pure evil. So it's just, I think, a perfect time to say, you know, it's, if you can't do anything else, be kind, because there's a lot of evil that we have to contend with today. Today is a lot different than it was in many areas, as I just mentioned, but certainly we need to keep all of those families in our thoughts and prayers as they move forward through this difficult time. Many of you have already mentioned the retirement luncheon. We had 229 retirees attend, and out of those that attended, we had 5,009 years of experience represented. Here's the kicker, though, because, you know, you don't hear a lot about people dedicating their entire career to a single organization. Used to, that was the norm. You know, you started with a company, you saw it through to the end. That is not the norm today. But we had a bus driver, Lillian King, who retired after 42 years of service to the Cobb County School District. That is amazing, and it was an honor to recognize her. Speaking of honor, 2018 Georgia Scholars, we had 19 Cobb seniors from eight of our high schools recognized as 2018 Georgia Scholars by the Georgia Department of Education. We had five from Walton High School. We had four from Alatuna High School. We had four from Wheeler High School. And then the remaining honorees from Cobb were from Harrison, Kale, Kennesaw Mountain, Lassiter, and Pope. And we certainly want to convey our congratulations to all of those seniors. They definitely make us proud. I've already mentioned it before the vote, but now that you've made it official, I greatly appreciate the support on this year's budget. I appreciate, Mr. Morgan, you drawing attention to something that was the right thing to do, and again, we were able to find money in the budget to do that. So it was definitely a team effort in that regard. You know, we've got always, it's hard to keep up with how many appreciation weeks that we have, but last week, as you already mentioned, was Teacher Appreciation Week. We definitely, as I make the analogy to baseball, they're the nine stars on the field that everybody comes to see. So definitely, they are the superstars. I'm glad we're able to recognize them in a raise that is historic for this school district. And this week is Police Appreciation Week. So I made mention of our resource officers, and I greatly appreciate them as well. Again, they're the front lines, and, you know, there is nothing like a school environment to be a police officer within. And, you know, when something bad comes to town, you want to make sure that the resource officers you have in place are adequately trained, expertly equipped, and have the professionalism to deal with every situation that they incur, which any school can run the litany, right? So we greatly appreciate everything that they do for us. Graduation is coming up, as many of you have already mentioned, made reference to. We will be graduating, and I've still not heard from my phone friend what that total number is. I'm giving somebody the chance for a half a day off tomorrow, but nobody's coming up with it. So 8,023, I'm making that number up. Don't quote me on that. Thomas, don't write that number down back there, man. So, but, you know, it's that time of year where it's awesome for us because obviously we get to participate in those ceremonies on stage. And regardless of, if you're a kindergarten teacher or a 12th grade AP Lit teacher, you have had an impact on the thousands of graduating seniors walking across the stage, embarking on the next path of success that they choose to embark on. And that may be the world of work, that may be technical school, that may be four-year degree school, that may be the armed forces. And whatever that path is, we have done our due diligence to make sure that we have prepared them to be successful, and that is just, that's a heavy burden to bear, knowing that we have 113,000 students in this district. But the 18,000 employees and team members that we have do an awesome job, and I can't say enough appreciation for each one of you. Finally, I want to recognize three students, and it is three students, because what I'm about to say is, we transitioned a little bit ago. It's been a minute now since we made that transition to having the board meetings run by Event Services. Everybody knows John Stafford and his team that conducts the graduations that we're about to participate in, does an awesome job. But we've got three students, seniors, who have been at every board meeting and will also be doing graduation next week. So we want to take a minute to bring them out and recognize them. Ryland McGreevy, Trevor Montanero, and Tyler Scott. Y'all come out and wave. Where are you at? Some in the back?
Right there.
Right there? All right, we don't have all nine now. Come on and wave, hurry. I know you can hear me. Run, run like the wind. Use the secret door back here. See? That speaks to the level of student success we're able to realize, because when we're able to utilize students to put on a production, and this is a production, if you've ever watched it from home, streaming, online, and channel 23, 24? Four. I always get that wrong. You think I could remember that with numbers and such. But anyway, so channel 24, and everybody keeps saying about, hey, I saw the, you know, the board meeting on TV and these kind of things, and, well, I won't tell you what I say, but, you know, there's better TV to watch, but I'm glad you do. But in all seriousness, we appreciate you guys. I know I'll see you at the graduations I'm in, and so it's truly awesome at the level of service you guys provide us. And I didn't pay attention to who came out, but one of you has got to be Lynn's son, right? Oh, you had, okay, 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 okay. Two of you are going to claim her for crying out loud. Mark that down. Good grief. So, but in all seriousness, John, you do a great job with your team, and I can't say enough because, you know, it's, it could be very easily like a sports team, where the seniors graduate and you stink the next year, you know, because your talent is left. But it seems like every year, the talent continues at a consistent level. We say, we want to see, you know, we need a video to be made. You guys step up to the plate, so I can't say enough of appreciation for you guys. So again, I appreciate you, and I'll see you next week. That's it for me, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I've just got a few things. Some people may have heard that I graduated from Wheeler High School back in the day, so I must say with pride that it was, it was great on May the 2nd to stand there or sit there in the media center with some of my colleagues and watch our governor sign a number of education bills right here in Cobb County.
a number of education bills right here in Cobb County at Wheeler. And also, as a point of pride, it was nice to see former board member Scott Sweeney, who the governor has appointed to the, excuse me, the Georgia State Board of Education. So he'll be serving education at the state level. May the 3rd, attended the school council recognition, and it's kind of heady and kind of tougher wear party, but I had a good time, and we have a lot of, that was terrible. But really, I mean, the people that are working in the background with, and people have talked about, you know, the number of students that our counselors are working with. They do a fantastic job. The Cobb Marietta Group gets together once a year, acknowledges each other, hands out awards, and it was great to attend that. And a lot of people don't know, and so I like to remind them, the space shuttle program, well, we have a program here at Russell Elementary. It has lasted longer than the space shuttle program. Russell STS 21 took place on May the 8th and May the 9th. And if you don't know, this is where our elementary school kids at Russell get involved, and they have to be admitted into their space program. They learn problem solving, they learn how to, there's just so many things, I won't, but it is fantastic to watch, and I got there to watch the liftoff, and you can Google it and maybe find some of the video on YouTube, but these kids do a fantastic job. And I was doing a little poll, and there were four adults there at STS 21 that were at STS 1, 21 years ago. So that was kind of cool. And then I would like to mention, May 14th, just past Tuesday, the Cobb County Farm Bureau hosted first responders appreciation out at the farmer's market in West Cobb, and I had several of us were there. I had the opportunity to be there when they put a microphone in front of me. And of course, you've got the hook and ladder fire truck, you got the helicopter sitting over on the field, and all this equipment, and the kids are running around, it's great. But I did, I want you to know that I mentioned that there were some first responders that couldn't be there because they were still at work. But that's what we have in our Cobb County School District Police Department. These are our first responders. In a conversation with somebody not too long ago, they were questioning why we need our own police force. And I had a number of things to say, but let me just say that situational awareness by having resource officers assigned to schools who knew, know the students, and if they don't know the student, they know the teacher who can explain what's going on with the student. You aren't going to get that unless you have people right there in the ground who know what's going on. And so my hat's off to the men and women of our police department who could make it out to the park and play on the hook and ladder and all that stuff. But we appreciate what you do, and I'm sure our parents appreciate what you do. And finally, we had our first commencement of 2018 this afternoon at Sprayberry High School. We had four students graduate from the special needs program, and I got to certify their diplomas. And, Mr. Morgan, you would have loved it, because I can't get through it without tearing up. I mean, it is emotional, because when these kids graduate, I can hear in my head people saying, our prayers have been answered. But we had four wonderful people, and they were dressed up in their cap and gown. Dr. Tracy Doe was there on the stage with me, and it was a great way to start the graduation season. So I look forward to congratulating all our graduates next week and can't wait for the next school year to start. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, and we're, no objection, we are adjourned.